I'd like to say good evening to everyone. We now call to order the August meeting for the County Planning Commission. We again welcome you all here this evening. Our first order of business is going to be the approval of the agenda, tonight's agenda, in additions or deletions. If not, Chair entertain a motion?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, the agenda's been approved for tonight. The minutes from our June 26th, 27th, and July 10th meetings, we received those. Any questions on that? If not, Chair entertain a motion to put it to record.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll put the minutes to record.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I move that we fix the time to adjourn to no later than 9:00 PM.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we, have a second? Okay. Okay, all right. Well, motion fails at that particular point, so.
How about nine thirty?
Anything? What we'll do is look like we're a little there by surprise. But anyway, what we do is try to move through the meeting as orderly as we can and try to see if, once everybody's spoken and all things have been done, hopefully it's about nine o'clock. Okay, all right. Got it. Okay, now, we're going to move on to our next item on the agenda, which will be our O business. And we would now, Mr. Drummond, Neil.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This proposed amendment to the zoning ordinance, case ZTA 1224-1. The planning commission will consider revision to Appendix A, the zoning ordinance, Article 8B, Planned Unit Development District, PUD of the county code. Proposed revision is intended to realign district standards with the goals identified in the 2023 comprehensive plan by updating various procedures, provisions, and regulations, namely, within the development standards section. The draft is currently prepared, the draft as currently prepared, will repeal and replace Article 8B in its entirety. The planning commission will determine whether the proposed ordinance amendment is necessary to further the general purposes of promoting health, safety, or general welfare of the public and other proposed purposes found in the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2283 and 2285. The planning commission held a public hearing regarding this proposed amendment on May 8th, 2024, and continued the discussion on July 10th, 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Thanks for your attention to these items tonight. We do have a couple of text amendments. We'll try not to muddle them together or confuse them. They are uniquely different, but they are in the zoning ordinance that we'll be looking at tonight. The first, as Neil mentioned, is the PUD, what it's commonly known as, or the Planned Unit Development. Existing ordinance that we have today, Article 8B in the zoning ordinance today, and as Neil mentioned, the intent of this draft would be potentially to repeal and replace what's in there in its entirety. You all have looked at this through a public hearing once. We continued that discussion. We had good discussion again last month on the items. So, Mr. Chairman, I'm just going to briefly walk through those and then kind of highlight some of the changes that we picked up on from our discussion with the planning commission last month, and then we can move forward as you all see fit. PUD is basically typically what you describe as a mixed-use type development. One of the biggest changes that we have introduced into this draft for consideration is the initial district size. Right now, to have a PUD, you have to have a minimum of 200 acres. We, initial draft had it at 10 acres. After some discussion, it's now 20 acres in the current draft, and staff feels like that's still an appropriate beginning number. Anything less than 200 is actually going to be better because that just encourages, in staff's opinion, a large-scale development, and really, the comp plan does not seek to have another Clevenger's Corner in the county anywhere at the moment, so. Initial density is set at 12 dwelling units per acre unless an incentive is met, and that incentive includes multifamily or some other type of housing development other than single-family detached, you have the potential to increase your density to 16. No minimum lot size, maximum coverage is set, no minimum lot width, so you have a lot of flexibility, and that's done by design intentionally with a PUD. Just some incentives that are in there that are to reduce overall open space. We talked a lot about that actually last month, and then incentives to additional lot density that I mentioned there. Example of an incentive-based reduction of open space is if you provide, actually intentional, planned-out vegetated riparian buffers. It's something that we do see a lot in developments today, but this code would incentivize that, allow you to buy down basically open space requirements if you provide that intentionally inside the development from day one with the concept plan. Nutrient credits, all deal stormwater parking structures is another incentive. We talked about these things last month, so I'm not going to dwell on them too much. Just the idea of buying down those open space requirements with certain uses to enhance the development, basically. I'm going to stop here just for a second because this is the density increase that we discussed a little bit. So, the base unit maximum would be 12 units per acre in a PUD. You can potentially get up to higher units per acre if you see there, and the incentive is basically that 25% of the dwelling units are mixed-use type dwelling, so like a cottage court, multifamily and apartment complex, for example, or duplexes. And then there's a section on circulation. Mr. Chairman, before I kick it back to you all for questions and ideas on how to move this forward or not move forward, I just wanted to kind of touch base on some of the things that we did change that you'll see in the draft that was posted to board docs. There was added language to reinforce the concept that PUD is for areas within the future growth areas that are designated in the current comprehensive plan and the urban services boundary, which is also designated in the comprehensive plan. There was a removal of the EV chargers, public transportation as incentives. There's a discussion about that that's not in the ordinance that you see before you tonight, our draft ordinance there. Changed the incentive scoring so that the maximum reduction in open spaces, a minimum of 25, is 25%, not larger than that. Reduced the amount of parking that would be needed in a parking structure or solar canopies to 15% for that incentive, and those are on pages 14 and 15 of the draft ordinance. Removed the total floor area maximum for residential uses in mixed-use structures. There's additional wording that was added to the draft about public transportation and trails, and then there's an added encouragement for provision of parking space for the general public, and we spent some time talking about parking and the concern that there may not be enough. So, that was discussed. Chairman, I'm happy to go through the actual ordinance with you all tonight. There is no timetable on this particular text amendment as far as staff is concerned, so the planning commission can move it forward tonight with any sort of recommendation, hold on to it some more. We believe we have captured at least the changes that we discussed last month, so happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you, Sam. Commissioners?
Mr. Dorian, thank you.
Yes, I have some additional questions. As things sink in from one meeting to the next, I think of things. But right now, if you have the density at 12 units per acre, now that can be any kind of unit, because suppose they start going and stacking condo units?
Yes.
Is that only 12 condos on one acre?
Yeah, 12 units per acre. I mean, it could be, you probably would look at the overall plan as far as like the overall track, calculate what your max density could be. Obviously, you have a max height, so that's going to limit you to.
That's what I'm wondering, if you're going up 45 feet, three stories, so can that be three units stacked, and how many of those can be on this one acre?
Yeah, right now, there's no guidance set in the PUD, so there's flexibility to be able to do that type of development in there.
Okay, so it's not a restriction if they want it to go higher?
No, there would not be.
Okay, and then the setbacks. Okay, so when we specify these, are we thinking that the front setback, which is 20 feet from the road into the start of the building, whatever the building is, that 20 feet is not designed for parking, is it?
20 feet would be very minimal for any type of parking.
Okay.
You would most likely have parking inside the structure with a garage. Right now, the code only requires two parking spaces per dwelling unit.
Right.
Most of those are accommodated with garages, at least with one car garage or an on-street parking space. Just keep in mind, these types of developments with the PUD, they're master-planned upfront. It's a little bit different than our typical subdivision ordinance, right, where we spell everything out in the ordinance. This would, you would present a concept plan, you're going to show where your parking's going to be, and these are just base minimums here. Most likely, the development would have more than that, so.
So they're not going to park in front of a unit and take their stuff upstairs or anything?
Right.
The parking's going to be separate, either behind it?
Yeah, and you know, this wouldn't prohibit multifamily either, so you could even have a parking garage, you know, a parking lot, you know, on site, so.
I just wanted to be flexible enough, if we're going through all this effort, that somebody's going to use it.
Right.
Because there's a lot, to me, it's like still a lot of rules.
Yeah, I agree. And we did try to, you know, intentionally put in some flexibility so that it would be used. And honestly, the biggest thing is that front-end acreage requirement, jumping from 200 down to 20.
I would figure that if they're going to put the density in there that they need to, by the time they park, we have water retention of some kind, I don't see how 10 acres is going to be.
Right.
Profitable to someone who might want to invest in such a.
Yeah, and we discussed that, and I agree, and that's why we've moved that up to 20 acres.
That's all I had, thank you.
Okay, anyone else?
Sam, we talked a little bit about the comment you had, let's see, circulation and connectivity. Can you go back to that, please? Yeah, if I come down to the third bullet from the bottom, it says it should connect to nearby existing ultimates for facilities such as sidewalks and so forth. Would not be better to make that say must connect? To me, a should means it doesn't do anything. It's just a recommendation. So if we want that to happen, I think we ought to change that should to a must.
Yeah, and in general, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Zegley, you're absolutely right. I mean, we don't want to have terms like that in the ordinance, and right now, it is in there drafted like that, so that is a good recommendation to basically get rid of that word, so.
Okay. Anyone else? Mr. Bryce?
Go ahead, Lance.
Yeah, I just follow up on Mr. Zegley's comment there. The only question would be, is how far is the existing sidewalk from the development?
Yeah.
In other words, it could be in there like that, because if it's like a half-mile away, and we put in there must be, then they would have to connect to it, right? So, I think it depends on how it reads there.
Yeah, and to that point, the language that we use currently for subdivisions in general, it's, we do have a designated distance, and we also use the term where possible, which again, intersects some subjectivity, you know, some interpretation, which you generally want to try to avoid when you're looking at a zoning ordinance, so. But we certainly could, should leaves a lot of room for interpretation, so certainly could qualify that term a little bit, so.
Back to Mrs. Thornhill, comment about the 20-foot. I mean, typically, if you're parking a parking, you're parking your car in the front of the driveway, let's say, you're going to have two in the garage, you're going to have to park one or two out in the driveway. If you're doing that, you want to have at least 18 to 20 feet there, so if you have a sidewalk or some other improvements in the front of it, it's not really, you're not going to meet it, you know, that requirement, so.
No, but you could have an alleyway in the back that has parking, and we've seen that, right?
You could, courtyard-type approach.
That's the type of thing that this would encourage, you know, if you're going to have that front setback, that minimal, you're going to have to find your parking somewhere, so.
Right, and then, I guess the other question would be, like, on some PUDs, you have a bulk restriction line, where basically, when you put the lots and you have large, you know, multifamily units, but you're up against property line, you'd have different perimeter setbacks than you would internal setbacks.
Yeah.
Because you don't want to be so close to the adjoining property owner and things like that, so I would suggest adding something similar to that, that basically would set the lot, set the buildings back a little further from the property line so you're not right up on top of the next-door neighbor.
Yeah, and you can, and you could vary that based on building height, a lot of that's what you see often for things like that, so.
Yeah, you just run the fee angle and you decide what that setback is based on that. Go ahead, Mr. Bryce.
Thanks. Yeah, I was just actually going to make the same point that Lance made about the wording with the should connect. If it's impossible to connect or not practical to connect, there needs to be some ability to do something else, so.
Sure.
I don't know what wording you might be looking at, maybe shall, if possible, connect nearby, you know, something of that nature.
Yeah, no, I hear the commissioner's line clear on that. I think that's definitely a good recommendation.
Anyone else?
No.
Doug?
Real quick about the 20-foot front setback. You know, the VDOT Culpeper District, which covers nine counties, they no longer want water and sewer in the roadway. That's their big push. They want it out of the roadway, they're not accepting it within the right-of-way because they don't want to maintain it. So, once you're putting sewer on one side, water on the other side of the road, and then you have the 10-foot dry utility easement on each side of the road, you know, for cable, Wi-Fi, I mean, you're beyond 20 feet with easement, so it's just something to keep in mind. I mean, that's 20-plus feet, you can't plant a tree or do anything, so that's making it really tough.
Yeah, the only thing I'll add to that is a PUD does allow for private streets, so there would be the opportunity for a private street development to handle those utilities a little bit different than what VDOT, yes, you're right about that, though. If you intend to have VDOTs serve streets, you're going to increase your setback based on utility easements alone, so.
Sam, I have a question. So, is the key language in this, under development standards, for limiting the placement of the smaller PUD? Describing that, you know, it's heavily discouraged that it will not be in a, that it will be in a future-growth area, well, it's discouraged not to be in a future-growth area urban services boundary. So, is that the key, is that, you said you tighten that up, so is that the key place you did it?
I think so. That would probably be the appropriate place to do it in the ordinance, to tighten that up a little bit, yeah.
Okay, yeah. I just still have this concern, which you can alleviate it if you can, that as you look at the master and water sewer plan and your future water and sewer lines that travel out into the county, I think these smaller developments could pop up further away from the urban services boundary than we think at some point, so you can elaborate on that, or?
Yeah, so, of course, your comprehensive plan is a guide, right, so that does have things like the future land use areas, the future growth areas, if you will, the urban services boundary, which talks about the public utilities. But the way this ordinance is constructed, we have two PUDs today, those are set in stone with prifers. We have Clevengers on the north end of the county in Boston, out in the western part of the county, which is not developed, but it is set in stone as far as the prifers. I say that to say that anything coming forward will have to go through a process. This won't be an automatic thing that someone can do on their property, the way it's currently drafted, which means that they'll have a separate rezoning process that will go through a public hearing process with the planning commission and then with the Board of Supervisors. In any rezoning process, you know, we're required to notify the neighbors, there'll be a public hearing process. So, there is a check and balance, if you will, through that process with any rezoning, whether it's a PUD or R1 or whatnot. But I do think the language for a PUD, which allows for denser development, to tie it to the urban services boundary or public utilities is pretty important. But that doesn't necessarily mean to write the town of Culpeper, but that's what our current comp plan does suggest, so.
Go ahead.
So, does it say it has to be on water and sewer, public water and sewer, somewhere?
Um.
Because it's almost, what we've just talked about now means you need to be on public water and sewer, you're not going to just do this.
Yeah, anything of that nature, that dense nature is going to have to.
But does it say it somewhere?
I don't know right offhand, Commissioner Thornhill.
Can we make it say that?
Yeah, we could.
Sam, on page 18, PUD shall be subject to public utilities.
It says it?
Okay, so page 18.
Number of pages, okay.
It's in there.
And we can even further clarify it from public utilities to public water and sewer.
Do you have a microphone?
Yes.
Do you have a microphone?
Anyone else? Another question?
Just general question, are we going to go through the actual ordinance or not?
I'm sorry.
Are you going to walk?
I was not intending to, Mr. Commissioner Zegley, we can, you know, we can, I know that you have some suggestions as far as the uses potentially and things like that, and this would be the time to go through and do that, if we want, if the.
You just specified which ones you.
Okay, great. Let's see, can I start?
Go ahead.
Okay, great. Yeah, in the matrix there, we talked about what's allowed, misuse, and open space and so forth. We have manufactured home communities as conditional use. Why is that? I just didn't know the rationale. Why would manufactured homes be treated any differently from a regular house?
Yeah, those certainly could be moved to a permitted category, or green on the chart instead of yellow.
I don't know what anybody else thinks about that, but again, I don't see the difference, so I would thought that would have been permitted.
Yeah.
Let's see, another question I had is, on page seven, we talk about auto, trailer, sales, and service. I understand that. We have boat sales, comma, service. Is that supposed to be sales and service?
Yeah, to match that language, Commissioner Zegley, I agree with you, it should be and.
Okay, let's see. On page eight, we say plumbing and electrical supplies, parentheses, screen storage only, not permitted. I mean, so we're not, I guess I would look at that, and I'm thinking that's a hardware store.
Mm-hmm.
So, I don't know why would that be a not permitted activity.
So, the hardware store, home improvement store is permitted, it's a different category, it's listed separately just above it. Those, this type of use would be more of your industrial type use, like we recently had with United Electric out there at the airpark, something that's a little bit larger facility, that's the intent of that language.
Okay, so somewhere else, hardware stores, okay.
Right.
On page nine, we talk about institutional homes and healthcare facilities, and then on page, and that's a conditional use, and then on page 10, we talk about nursing and convalescent homes as a permitted use.
Yeah.
I'm not quite sure what the difference is between those two.
Yeah, there's a, there is a little bit of a difference in certain types of homes. You have group home certifications, which have a different state certification than a nursing home, so there are other uses that need those. This, we specifically say not of correctional nature, and that's current, that's actually keeping with current code that was pulled from our existing zoning ordinance. But there is a little bit of a difference between a typical nursing home and a group home, per se.
Okay, okay, you understand that?
Yes.
That's fine. Let's see. On page 10, we're talking about this PUD, and we're trying to maximize the land, yet we say that we're going to, agriculture's a conditional use? I don't understand why agriculture would be considered a use in a PUD.
Yeah, that's certainly something that the commission could discuss further, that, you know, looking at the draft we have, that was definitely written in red, which means we were probably unsure where the commission was, wanted to go on that direction. You certainly could list it as conditional like it is, which means it's by right, but the intent is for development, you know, a mixing of housing and commercial development with a PUD typically, so you could also say not permitted.
So, I'll open that up to discussion. Any other thoughts on that?
They don't seem very compatible.
I agree.
But maybe it could be a garden thing where they have.
Yeah, there could be some limited uses, I could see where that would come into play. I mean, our agricultural definition is fairly broad today, so.
Doesn't clarify with that definit, where it says define, maybe you should put an asterisk, defined as what?
But if you had another large PUD like Longley, why wouldn't you leave agriculture available as long as you could if we're following the rest of our comp plan?
Yeah, because I can, I mean, it's a broad term. It could be gardening, it could be a chicken or two, it could be a beehive, it could be, I mean, multiple, multiple things. It could be some rabbits. I mean, there's a ton of things that it could be that you could do in a small space.
Once they get approval for their PUD, we're not going to police what they can and can't do from that list, most likely, right?
No, but it'll probably be fleshed out pretty serious way with the rezoning effort itself with a proper statement, yeah.
I guess I would ask, at least, I never saw it defined, so can we put a definition of what is, you know, the scope of the agriculture?
I think when you're thinking about a 20-acre PUD, for example, a minimum, if this were to go through like this, as drafted, I could see there'd be probably a limited use for an agricultural use, but to Commissioner Burton's, you know, if we do have 100-acre PUD, and, you know, you only really develop, you know, the front half of it, the back half of it could be farm, so. I don't know why you would re, in my opinion, and I'm not sure why you would rezone the entire piece.
Right.
At that point, but you would just probably leave it in its default zoning, which is probably maybe A1 or A, but you certainly could have someone choose that method, so.
My opinion here is, I think we need a little bit more specificity in that, but nobody else thinks that's a.
Don't we usually, don't we usually have the definitions somewhere?
For agricultural?
Yeah.
Yes, we do. It's in the definition section, Article 2 of the zoning ordinance, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do we need to refer to that, or just?
No, this ordinance would refer to that by default.
Okay.
But what, I mean, is, does agriculture definition, what kind of scope is included here?
Pretty much anything as far as your typical farming activity, I mean, your livestock, crops, anything that would be considered agricultural, including aquaculture, if somebody wanted to do that, so.
Okay, I'll back off in reference of Mr. Burton's comment about the larger areas. A conditional is fine. Okay. All right. Go ahead, yeah.
All right, I have one, I want to ask, it says that you cannot have a cleaners or a laundromat.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, like, usually the cleaners, it's a big part of your life if you're running in and out somewhere, you need a cleaners. So, can we make that as a conditional or something?
Yeah, we certainly could. I mean, back in the day, and that was years ago, I mean, those uses, you didn't want them near residential uses, but that's not the case today, so.
Yeah, I think cleaners should be okay.
I agree.
All right.
You said two, cleaners and laundromats?
Laundromats. Yes, cleaners and a laundromat, I don't know if you want the laundromat in that environment, but we're kind of opening it up to lots of things, so.
Yeah.
If you, you know, if you're in an apartment and you don't have a washer dryer, you're in a rental unit without it, then you got to go to the laundromat, but that could also open it to outside people coming in, but every, I think the cleaners was most, what I thought.
But then when you say conditional.
Yeah, or maybe it's permitted to have cleaners.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it could, it could go into that category, especially for a true mixed-use building that has like a strip center underneath of it.
So it could be permitted there?
Yeah. Why is taxidermy in there?
I'm sorry?
Taxidermy.
It's just a use that's listed, it's a commercial use that certainly is viable.
I think that's a little bit over the top for people that typically live in those high-density, are not going to want to see a dead animal coming in and out somewhere, so I feel like that.
I would leave that, there again, just to afford flexibility, certainly could leave that up to the development, but I would imagine the HOA guidelines or POA guidelines would probably be.
Because you got condition.
Probably stricter than our ordinance on that.
Okay. All right.
I have one more question.
You do? Go right here.
So, if I wanted to build a golf course community, how would I do that if a golf course isn't permitted? What's the best zoning process to make that happen around the golf course?
There's, it would, it would be tough with the PUD. You typically, I mean, we have, like, for example, Clevengers, the PUD happened around it, right? The golf course was there already.
Right.
And that happened around the existing golf course, that's the only example we have. Country Club, you know, could be seen as that, too, you know, that where developments happened around. So, typically, you see the golf course first in a rural area, at least in our neck of the woods, and then the development happens around it. And golf courses are allowed through a conditional use permit in the A1RA currently, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Anyone else? Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just follow up on agriculture. Mr. Chairman, if I could just follow up on agriculture as defined. I'm assuming we mean as defined in the section of the ordinance where all the definitions are provided.
Yes, sir.
So what you might do, just for clarity's sake, is agriculture as defined in section whatever that is, so people have a place to go to see what agriculture means. Because a lot of folks will look at that and they would say, they would say, they would think, okay, defined as what, and not know what that means. And that helps, would help to bring some clarity, I think, to what agriculture means in this case.
Yeah, we certainly could, we certainly could add that.
Say that again, I missed it.
Refer specifically where agriculture is defined.
Yeah.
You know, there's that, there's the section at the beginning where-
But what are you saying? Put the definition there.
Yeah, I would say agriculture as defined in section, paragraph, whatever. So people know exactly where to go to find out what it means.
I think that's where we, but that's good. Yeah, exactly. All right. Anyone else? All right. Any other discussion? We did have a public hearing on this last time, and, oh, we've already had a public hearing on. So at this time, if we have a choice to make, either we can send it forward with the changes that we already have seen, and even the ones that we've shared tonight, or, or what other option that we may come forth. So Chair entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. Let me have your paper with the case number. So I move that we send to the board of supervisors with our stamp of approval the proposed amendment to zoning ordinance CTA-12-24-1 regarding planned unit developments. We want to incorporate the changes that we made at the July meeting and changes tonight to clarify the definition of agriculture and per Mr. Zigley's request for-
Matrix changes.
Matrix changes. Does that capture it all? That captures what we did tonight. That's what I move.
Second.
We're probably moving to second in our discussion. Being an all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed likewise. Okay. Let's send that forward. All right. Next item on the agenda, we will now move to our new business.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have renewal of the Realhurst Farms Agricultural and Forest District. The planning commission will review the Realhurst Farms Agricultural and Forestry District in accordance with Article AE of the zoning ordinance and determine whether the district should be continued, modified, or terminated. To date, there have been no withdrawals from this district since the last renewal of 2016 and no voluntary withdrawals during this renewal review period. There are currently 12 parcels enrolled in this district consisting as, total consistent, consisting totally, excuse me, of 1,188 acres.
Mr. Chairman, we don't see these too often because they renew on eight-year cycles, but, but we do have several agricultural and forest districts throughout the county, scattered throughout. They're established under guidelines set forth by the Code of Virginia, 15.24300, to protect agriculture and forest lands. Article AE and your local zoning ordinance regulates these districts. As Neil mentioned, this particular district is currently, it's one of the smaller districts in the county, but it's, it's 1,188 and a half acres. There are several landowners, not a lot, but there are several landowners in this district. They're highlighted in green on the map in front of you. Each landowner gets notified during a renewal process to see whether they want to stay in the district or potentially be withdrawn from the district. And to date, we have not received any notice that any of the district property owners would want to be removed from the district. In total, when you add this 1,188 acre district, we have currently about 41,281 acres that are enrolled in agricultural forest districts throughout the county. So this does make up a fairly small chunk of that overall district. But it is a viable district. Harrison put together a LISA score, land evaluation score for it. We ran it through the Agriculture and Forestry Advisory Committee. They met back in July and they put together a letter, the chairman through the Ag and Forest Advisory Committee, they do recommend to the planning commission that the district be renewed for another eight-year period as the staff. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to answer any questions about that. We do, could have a, should probably have a public hearing on it too, but every, all the existing landowners were notified of the district too, so.
Thank you, sir. Going to ask at this time if there's a, the applicant or is here or representative for the applicant who would like to speak to this request? If not?
Mr. Chairman, for this particular case, there really won't be one, there wouldn't be one applicant, but there'd be a multiple landowners.
The Forester District, they already-
That's right.
I've discussed that, okay. So public hearing is now open. Anyone who would like to speak to this? Yes. Give your full name for the record, sir.
My name's Tom Underwood. I live in the Salem District. I'm here speaking about this, about the land that is shown on the far eastern part of this district. Years ago, I served on the board of supervisors before I resigned and then got back. But during that time, yes, that land there, we had a property that was very near it that had difficulty being able to have a house put on it because of buffers that were on property very near it. And there was concern of was the property being properly, was it being hayed, or was it there for the buffers, et cetera? And there was quite a bit of contention about that parcel. So perhaps it makes sense to consider that when looking at the district. Outside of that, I'm 100% in support of the district. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. Clear the public hearing closed. Commissions?
Mr. Chairman, I move for the renewal of the full Realhurst Farms Agricultural and Forestry District as presented to us tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just ask the question, just per Mr. Underwood's point, so how would that concern be addressed? I mean, who would look at that to see if there's something that needs to be done?
Mr. Chairman, I can address that. So there, there is a parcel, and to clarify what Mr. Underwood was talking about, it's a, it may even be two parcels, actually. But they're, they're two smaller parcels as far as the overall district that are to the east of the core of the district, which is obviously here. They qualified, I'm assuming at the time when they were enrolled in the district to some level or minimum level. But what Mr. Underwood was referring to is when a property is enrolled in the Ag and Forest District, if someone were to potentially subdivide, for example, next to a parcel that's enrolled in the district, the Ag and Forest Advisory Committee looks at the subdivision and they can issue a buffer against the property that's being requested to be subdivided up to 200 feet. In the past, there, there were several 200-foot buffers that were issued, and that, in general, is not, the way the ordinance is at least written, the buffer is not supposed to prohibit the person from being able to subdivide, but it does not always make it easy. You know, it could, it can present difficulties. And I'm, I'm pretty sure that's what Mr. Underwood was referring to on this particular piece, because you can see there's some smaller parcels around that, that district piece there.
So it would be that committee's issue to look at and not a planning commission issue?
The planning commission has the opportunity. The Ag and Forest District Advisory Committee obviously saw fit to send it forward as, as it presented. But you do have the opportunity, there's three options, really. You can continue as is, renew the district. You do have the ability to modify the district. The code specifically allows the board ultimately to modify the district through a renewal period or terminate the district. Typically, we have not seen termination of any district in the county unless it, a withdrawn parcel when the core goes below the core that's required to have a district. We have seen that in recent years, where we did have one district that went away because of that. But those are the three options. The planning commission can recommend termination of the district, recommend approval as, as in its current form, or potentially recommend a modification to the district.
Right, 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 right. Any other, are ready?
I have one more comment. All right, is that parcel in land use now?
I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner Thornhill. I would have to-
It would dictate if it's being used agriculturally like it's supposed to be-
Right.
-if they're in the land use, if they're in that district.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that without, no check on the S.S.R.'s office.
So, so from this meeting, what would be the investigative process and communication with the landowner if, if the commission had a concern? Or is there one?
We could certainly do, well, you know, we could always-
We just don't strip the landowner of their, of their situation.
Yeah, and generally, the, through the renewal process, we have not seen that, you know, and, and at least in my time here, I've not seen that happen. But it is something, you know, it is a valid point, you know, one of the, especially with this particular piece, you know, because it is disjointed to some degree from the core of the district. It meets the criteria, you know, it's close enough to the core to meet the criteria to stay in, but it is a little disjointed from the, from the core of the district, which is really Realhurst Farms there, the backup portion of Realhurst subdivision, so.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. So any other discussion?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, my thing is, we've been clearing the comprehensive plan, we've heard it from the community members about, you know, we are an ag community and that's what we want to do. That's why I think we need to keep it as is, because I guarantee you, at some point